Good evening and welcome to our Facebook Live. Now this evening I'm joined by senior members, that's not old members, but senior members of Surrey County Council. All the councillors you see in front of you with the exception of myself are with Portfolio. Now, before we get started, if you have any questions that you have for our portfolio holders this evening, please put them in the comments and I will read those out. I'll get those read out for the relevant cabinet or rather portfolio holder to answer. Could I ask you also, if you are watching this live, to hit that share button? And share this with the communities in all the local Facebook groups that you belong to, with your neighbours, family, so that everybody can benefit with this. So I'm going to hand over now to Tim Oliver, councillor Tim Oliver, who is the leader of Surrey County Council to kick things off.
Thank you very much, Paul, and good evening to anyone that has joined us this evening. As Paul has said, we have all of effectively the cabinet of Surrey County Council, but we're here on an informal basis. And I'll just ask everybody to introduce themselves in a moment. Can I just say though that if, we will try and answer all of the questions that come through on the chat. If we, if we can't get through all of them, or indeed if we can't give you a full answer this evening, then we will respond as soon as we can, hopefully in the next day or so. So we will go through the chat and give you a written response. So we'd encourage you to put as many questions as you can in the chat. We have up to an hour, so technology apart, hopefully we'll be able to get through a lot of information. I'm just going to say a few words in addition in a minute. But I'm just going to start by asking everybody to introduce themselves and they can explain the area that they have a responsibility for. And I'll just do that on the list in the order that I've got, starting with Becky Rush.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Becky Rush, I'm the deputy leader of Surrey County Council and I'm the portfolio holder for finance and resources.
Thank you. Claire Curran.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'm Claire Curran and I am the portfolio holder for children and families, that's children's social care.
Thank you. Denise Turner-Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. Denise Turner-Stewart and I'm cabinet member for education and learning.
Thank you. Kevin Deeney.
Yes, good evening, Kevin Deeney. So I'm the lead for community protection, which covers so far and rescue, trading standards, colonists, military covenants, flooding and some other protection issues.
Thank you. Marissa Heath.
Good evening, I'm Marissa Heath. I'm the member for the environment, which covers our climate change plan and our countryside.
Matt Furness.
Good evening, I'm Matt Furness. I hold the portfolio for transport and infrastructure.
Rebecca Paul.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rebecca Paul and I hold the portfolio for levelling up and it's actually day two of the
Indeed, so hopefully everybody would be nice to you. Mark Newsey.
Thank you, leader. Mark Newsey, I'm the cabinet member, portfolio holder for communities, libraries, Your Fund Surrey, customer services, charities, volunteer sector, all of the resident facing areas of the council.
Thank you. Maureen Astwell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm portfolio holder for our emotional wellbeing and mental health services and for family resilience.
And last but certainly not least, Sinead Mooney.
Thank you, Tim. So my name's Sinead Mooney. I'm the cabinet member for adult social care and health. Thank you very much.
So thank you all very much. So we've done a few of these now and we've had some really useful feedback from residents. It is, you know, it's an open house, open opportunity for people to ask whatever they want in terms, excuse me, of what we're doing on your behalf and indeed how we are spending your money. The county has four key areas of focus and everything in some form or another feeds into that. So the first is to rebuild and to grow our local economy. Post-COVID, it's been very noticeable in terms of the impact that that has had here in Surrey, particularly actually around the two airports, Heathrow in the north and Gatwick in the south. So we're working with businesses to, you know, to create apprenticeships and job opportunities. And part of that work is reimagining the high streets, finding ways in which we can make those high streets sort of go to destinations with activities, you know, that people can participate in and enjoy. The second area, which is absolutely crucial and runs through everything that we do, is the health and wellbeing. We've seen an exponential rise through COVID, but both in terms of physical illness, but more particularly mental illness. We had a summit this afternoon with over 100 attendees of people that are working across Surrey in all sorts of capacities, that are doing a fantastic job in supporting people with mental health issues. And that is something that, you know, we are very focused on doing, supporting our vulnerable residents. Thirdly, and an area of considerable interest led by Marissa, is enabling a greener future. So it is looking at ways in which we can and must deliver our net zero carbon future by 2050 across the county and 2030 for the county council itself. I'm sure we'll touch on that as we go through the evening, but 41% of carbon emissions across Surrey is from transport, some form of transport, which is higher than the national average. And that is driving our whole approach to active travel schemes and to our investments in public transport, which I'm sure Matt will be happy to expand on. And then lastly, it is about thriving communities. What can the county do, what should it do to help and support our communities? And Mark Newsey is again, is leading on that. Exciting things like Your Fund Surrey and we may, he may want to give you a couple of examples of how we started to use some of that money. But it's really, it's about engaging, it's building on the work that we did during COVID to understand the impact, disproportionate impact that had on some of our communities and how we can address that. And that is absolutely about a multi-disciplinary approach between local government, the health service, police, voluntary, the charity and the faith sector. And there's a lot of activity on that from government. There's a white paper out today on adult social care and there'll be a further paper out in February around how all of these organisations can work together in a more integrated way. So that's just a very quick sort of snapshot and sort of hopefully gives a bit of a framework in terms of what we're doing. Before we just take any questions, I'm just going to ask Sinead Mooney just to give a bit of an update on where we are within Surrey on COVID, because the numbers are exceptionally high. So, Sinead.
Thank you very much, Tim. So I'd just like to highlight that I do have some data, but this data was from yesterday, from the COVID dashboard. And I'd just like to remind everybody before I go through the data, this is a fast-moving picture. But yesterday afternoon, Elmbridge, within the county of Surrey as we know, had the second highest COVID rates at national level. And that was then followed by Guildford, that came in at sixth, Waverley at seventh, Tandridge was eighth, Mul Valley eleventh and Spellform thirteenth in the national COVID rates tables. So I think it's just a really important opportunity just to remind people of the key messages really around how we're combating and fighting COVID-19. So it's very clear that we currently do have some of the highest rates in the country in our districts and boroughs. And out of those names I mentioned, that's six out of our 11 districts and boroughs in the top 15 rates in England. But as I say, this can change very quickly, but we still obviously need to do all we can to get the rates down in Surrey. So rates are increasing fast in every adult age group now, except the over 60s. So we also have consistently high rates in school-aged children and this has been the case for some weeks. We don't have any noted cases of the Omicron variant in Surrey as yet, but I think it's safe to assume and to say it will happen at some point and probably in the very near future. So it's now more important than ever that everyone starts following the new government guidelines if we are to give ourselves the best possible chance of a safe and healthy Christmas surrounded by our friends and family. It is now mandatory to wear face coverings in shops and on public transport and we should all be doing so, even if others around us aren't. We're strongly advising all staff, pupils and visitors at secondary schools to wear face covering in communal areas and the advice is the same to staff and visitors at our primary schools. Anyone entering the country from abroad must take a PCR test within 48 hours and isolate until they get a negative result. And we need to keep on going with these prevention measures that we are all now very familiar with. And I think it's timely just to remind everybody of these prevention measures. The first is getting vaccinated and going for your booster when you're invited. This is one of the single most effective things that we can do to stop the spread of COVID. We have proof that the vaccine works. Take symptom-free tests on days when you are more likely to catch or spread COVID. And what I mean by that is if you are mixing with people in crowded indoor places or meeting someone who's more vulnerable to the effects of the virus, it's important to take those tests. This is especially important in the run-up to the festive period when people will be wanting to spend more time with friends and families in larger clusters. Isolate if you have tested positive or if you've been instructed to do so by test and trace. Any close contacts of a confirmed Omicron case must isolate for 10 days regardless of their vaccination status. This is essential to contain the spread of the variant. And meet outside if possible, and if not, then opening the windows for just 10 minutes can make a difference to the concentration of COVID particles in the room. So it's really important that people stay at home if they're feeling unwell and get a PCR test to find out if they do have the virus. There are so many things we can do to minimise the spread and if we all continue to pull together, we can protect ourselves and those around us. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks for that, Sinead. Now, if you are watching this live Q and A, we've got quite a few people watching now, which is great. Could I just remind you, if you have any questions for any one of our cabinet members, to put them in the comments and we will get that read out and the relevant portfolio holder to respond to that. And also, if you belong to any local groups in your area, bearing in mind we cover the whole of Surrey. So if you're watching this wherever you are, hit that share button and share it to some of your local groups that other residents can benefit from the answers that the portfolio holders give. So now we've already had some questions come through. Let me dive straight into those, if you just bear with me. Okay, so the first question is, with rising inflation rates mainly due to higher fuel and energy prices, what is Surrey County Council doing to support vulnerable households with the cost of food and energy and other essentials? Who would like to take that? Don't all jump at once.
Well, okay, well, I'll have a go. Just in terms of actually a paper that went to the cabinet yesterday, which sets out how we are using the 5.3 million that we've received from government. So of that, just under 2 million will be used to fund food vouchers for children that are entitled to free school meals, including early years. And that will, that will cover the school holidays and in particular also includes support for care leavers over the Christmas period. So that's 2 million for that. 2.8 million is then being distributed to the district and borough councils to enable them to use that for kind of local requirements, local solutions. So anybody that is struggling should contact, in the first instance, the district and borough council and have a conversation with them. There's also the balance of the money is then going to food banks, to the voluntary, the charity, the faith sector and to the Surrey Crisis Fund. So there is, you know, a sum of money that is out there available for families that are struggling. So please do make sure you get in contact and get the support that you need.
Great, thanks for that, Tim. Just to remind viewers, if you're watching live, please put any questions you have for any one of our portfolio holders in the comments and I'll get those read out for them to answer. So the next question, which I think is a great question. Surrey County Council has claimed that it has improved its financial stability over the last few years. How will this benefit me in a post-COVID world? Becky?
Yep, that's definitely me and it is indeed a great question, Paul, because I think it's really important that we translate what we mean by financial stability into what that actually means for our services and our residents. So when we say that we're financially stable, what we mean is that we are living within our means, that we have all the right checks and balances in place internally to make sure that we're operating properly and that we're, and that we're building up our reserves so that it means that we can cover, we can weather any storm and cover the pressures that are coming our way. And we certainly saw this when we were dealing with the COVID outbreak last year and obviously ongoing, where we were able to quickly adapt and to deliver support for our vulnerable residents whilst continuing to deliver all of our business as usual as well. So in this post-COVID world, and I'm not sure it's that post-COVID at the moment, but let's say we're getting there. In this post-COVID world, you know, having financial stability as a council is absolutely critical. COVID has created a lot of extra demand for our services. You know, there's more elderly residents and children out there that need our help and we must make sure that we can respond and being stable, financially stable enables that. We need to support and pro our local economies and our high streets so we've got more jobs for our Surrey residents. And we need to make sure that we can continue to invest in our ambitious capital programme, which will improve the lives of our residents across Surrey. So that's things like our Thames flood scheme, extra care accommodation for elderly residents, additional send school places to make sure our children can stay in the county and in schools that's suitable. And of course, always investment in our 3,000 miles of roads. And so I think just in summary, the finance and the money are absolutely key enablers of the council. They enable us to do everything that we do and financially, financial stability enables us to deliver everything.
Okay, great, thank you very much for that. So the next question is, are we expecting a rise in scams this Christmas as a result of COVID? Who's going to take that?
I'll take that, Paul.
Thanks, Kelly.
I think it's a very simple answer, yes, unfortunately. If you look at the data from last Christmas, I think it was about a 61% increase on scams on shopping. So Surrey and Bucks, I have a joint trading standards team and they've launched a number of campaigns, so you'll be seeing them shortly. One of them's the Christmas Carol campaign. That doesn't mean you have to sing along, but it has all the details of in the campaign. So a simple answer, yes, and we've got to keep vigilant. As quick as we identify the scams, unfortunately they will identify new scams. So we've got to keep our eyes out.
Okay, great, thanks for that. And if you're watching this live and you have any questions for our cabinet members, please put them in the comments and I'll get those read out. So the next question is, this is from Leatherhead Living. What can Surrey County Council Cabinet do to help find a good alternative growth business for the Leatherhead site not now being used by Surrey Police, which they will sell? The site is zoned for strategic employment use under the draft local plan and co-located with other tech and defence sector employees. Who is going to take that?
Well, I'll probably take that, Paul, with the economic development is in my area. So as I mentioned earlier, we've, you know, supporting the local economy is absolutely essential and we have a growth board which is made up of a mixture of partners, including representation from businesses across the county. The team have a very regular conversation with all of the main businesses in the county, really just to make sure, touch base with them, to make sure that we're engaging with them and that actually, you know, that they're aware of what we're doing and anything that we can do to support them. So the announcement from the police that they're no longer intending to move to Leatherhead is very recent news, it was only, I think, confirmed last week. So we will engage with businesses, you know, for example, GlaxoSmithKline are in the process of just going through the detail with Elmbridge Borough Council, but are intending to set up their global headquarters for their consumer healthcare in Waybridge. And that brings 1,400 jobs into the local area. So we've got, we have over 300 international headquarters in the county, some really very big businesses and a huge number of small, medium enterprises. In fact, the biggest volume obviously is around those smaller businesses. So and one of the things that we're doing generally is to put working space into our library hubs. So we will work with the businesses and we will do everything that we can to try and generate that inward investment from new business or for relocation from existing businesses.
Fantastic, thank you. Now we're joined by Steve Backs, who was a little late to the party tonight. But Steve, did you want to just quickly introduce yourself, just to say who you are for the residents watching?
Yeah, apologies everyone for my late arrival this evening. I am Steve Backs, I'm the deputy cabinet member for the environment.
Lovely, thank you very much. Great, so we're going to go on to the next question now, which actually might relate to you, Steve, or Marissa, anyway. If we are to encourage people to use their cars less, what are you going to do to improve the poor bus services, which are not currently a realistic alternative to my car? Who's going to have that?
It probably sits between Matt and I. I mean, Matt can talk more specifically on the bus provision that we're looking to improve, including roll out of electric buses that we've done in towns like Farnham. But also we're looking more broadly at how we can get better connectivity through improved infrastructure for walking, cycling and car clubs, et cetera. So I'll let Matt just talk about buses briefly and keep my answer short there.
Thanks, Marissa. Yes, so we've been given quite a bit of money by the government to improve both walking and cycling routes and we will have an investment plan for every district and borough in place by next year, which will enable us to bid for more money by government. But on buses in particular, we set aside £49 million for the switch over the third most polluting buses in Surrey over to hydrogen and electric. But I'm delighted to say that I think the first order is about to go in for making the whole of the east of the county, that's all the way through Tandridge and right into Banstead, hydrogen, we're working with Metro Bus there. In addition to that, we're having a whole fleet of electric minibuses going into each district and borough as well to enable that switch over with the community transport. And we have our first on-demand service in Mul Valley, where you can literally just, a bit like an Uber, you can just call up a bus and it will come in to you to take you into town and those will be electric as well. So we're really changing the way that we move around the county.
Okay, thank you very much. And do you think they will be viable alternatives to the car? Because that was the question.
Really do, Paul, yeah. So I mean, like yourself with an electric bike, we've got to realise that the car won't be there for everyone, the electric car, and we can't provide enough charging points for absolutely everyone. So we're going to have to think, can our journey's better, to be honest, rather than just having the convenience of a car outside and a petrol station nearby.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so let's get on to the next question. Okay, what are you doing for young people with physical and mental health needs and learning disabilities to prepare them for adulthood? Not sure who's going to have this, Denise, there you go, thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. So we know that the vast majority of children with additional needs are capable of and really would like sustained paid development with the right support. So last month, we held a preparation for adulthood event, which was really well attended, which explained the wide range of options available to young people with additional needs. So we're developing more pathways for young people towards employment with supported internships, college placements and apprenticeships. And we've actually created seven new apprenticeships for young people with additional needs within Surrey. And we're also promoting this scheme to our partners and as you can appreciate, we have extensive influence throughout Surrey. So we're really enthused and encouraged with the response to that, to that campaign and that will continue. So yeah, great question, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Now, if you are watching this Facebook Live, could I ask you, if you have any questions whatsoever, stick them in the comments there and we'll get those read out for our cabinet members to respond to. So let's get on to the next question. Okay, I'm really worried about climate change and the effects it will have, especially on future generations. What is Surrey County Council doing to encourage districts and boroughs, communities and businesses to take the climate crisis seriously and play their part?
Okay, that's one for me. As Tim mentioned at the beginning of the session, we've set some really ambitious goals. We've not just stuck to being a county council that tackles climate change for our own buildings. We've gone wider and set the whole of the county. In order to do that, we have to work with partners. So we've engaged actively with the districts and boroughs and said, where can we help? Where can we share resources? Where can we do joint procurement, for example? Where can we share joint messaging and communications to our residents? And we've also included wider groups. We have a greener futures board, which brings in some really high-level partners to help us think about this strategically, as well as then lots of other community groups and offshoots of that, which bring in the voice of residents to understand what they need as well. We're equally worried and we've set ourselves a really ambitious goal to get to net zero and we're prepared to lead on that and go across scope one, scope two and scope three to do it. So please rest assured, we're really on force with this and all our councillors are getting behind it as well. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Marissa. Okay, so the next question is, how is Surrey overseeing the Household Support Fund distribution? I understand that district councils will administer the scheme, but there seems to be a variation to how this is being done. Who's going to take that?
Well, I think that's, I don't know whether Denise will, but I think, I mean, we, we, obviously we rely upon the district and boroughs to use their discretion, that they have the access to the data. They have to file a return back to the county so that we can see that they have spent that money. And we absolutely encourage them to do that. And this isn't, this hasn't been given to them to sit on. So we need to make sure that they actively get out there and find the families and the children that need that financial and other support. So we will, we will, we will track that and monitor it. And if we think that there's any delay or otherwise, then we will, we will be actively engaging with that district and borough to make sure that they do move it forward.
Great, thank you very much. This is going to be an interesting question. Is Surrey County Council planning on renewing its membership with Stonewall in 2022? Who's going to have that one? Tim?
Yeah, I will, I will answer this one. I mean, Steve's been doing some work on equality, diversity and inclusion. So this is an unfortunate series of events. We signed up to Stonewall a year or so ago at a time when we were developing our EDI policies. Stonewall have a wealth of material and that is what we accessed. And we paid a fee of £3,000 for access to the, both policies themselves, for us to review and adapt and also for some general, some general advice. Since that time, of course, Stonewall has come under significant criticism for its lobbying. And that is not what some, this council has founded. Um and uh and that is not what some, that is, this council has found itself caught in the crosshairs in fact. Um our membership expires in any event uh in the early part of next year, but actually. Uh what we have done, and and this was, it was a stopgap for us, uh we have now recruited or in the process of recruiting a dedicated. Uh equality, diverse and inclusion officer, uh and that person will be joining the organisation very shortly. And at that point, we will then uh resign our membership of Stonewall, because we will have uh the in-house expertise. Uh to take forward um our our policy. So um you know, it's 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 uh. You know, I know that there has been considerable criticism and I'm aware that that other organisations have taken that same decision. Uh to leave Stonewall and that is what we will be doing as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, if you're watching this Facebook Live, please do put your questions in the comments. Um and we'll get those read out uh for you. Some uh really good questions coming through. Um now, our next question is, what is Surrey County Ca- what is Surrey County Council doing? To limit the risk of harm caused by utility companies' roadworks when they maintain poor public safety practices? Uh I assume that's Matt.
Yeah, it will be. Thanks, Paul. Uh so we we're quite robust with uh utility companies. Um where they are sort of effectively being unsafe on the highway. Uh we have the ultimate power of actually we take them to court. And we've done this on two occasions, uh twenty nineteen uh with BT. Uh where they reinstated the road. Um well, they didn't effectively, they just sort of filled in a load of gravel and left it. Um and uh recently, actually here, twenty twenty-one, where the you could actually just walk through an open uh work site. Um and we've uh we prosecuted them. They were fined in both times, they pled guilty in both times as well. And they were fined twenty thirty thousand pounds uh in twenty nineteen and forty thousand pounds um this year. And they're currently appealing against the forty thousand pound limit. So um that that's our ultimate uh sanction that we can we can do. Um it's not one that we we sort of do too often and local authorities don't, because the courts keep any of the fines. Uh we don't see any of that money. Um but we constantly are reviewing, uh we do inspect uh the majority of the sites. And uh we do have utility companies on improvement plans as well. So uh I hope I hope that gives information, but uh yes, we we really do sort of keep on our toes with the utility companies.
Great, thanks, Matt. Um okay, so the next question is. Um what update can you give us on the South West Rail train cuts, particularly preventing the drop to one train per hour? Is this you as well, Matt?
Yes, it is. So um we've uh put a very robust response in objecting to um South Western Rail's proposals for their changed timetable. Uh particularly because of the peak hour impacts of train reduction. Um I saw that pop up in Facebook and I was just actually just trying to go on their website to find have they um have they made any changes. We were expecting to um have a proposal from them by now. Um I don't think we've seen anything yet, but um I'll double check and I'll put it in the comments tomorrow. Um we really did oppose uh what we were were planning on doing. Um and it wasn't just us, uh it's very much being set financially now, because uh all the train operators are paid by the government. And so they are now given a budget and uh they have to work within that. So not only are we the sort of really pushing uh SWR, but we are pushing Treasury as well to make sure that they fund uh train operations adequately.
Great. Okay, thanks for that. Um. Okay, so next question is, I was excited to hear about the launch of Your Fund Surrey almost a year ago. But I haven't seen much about it since. Could someone let me know what's happening? Mark?
Thanks, Paul, uh and thanks uh for whoever put that question forward. Um. Yeah, it may seem like it's been very quiet, but it's been um it's been actually very busy behind the scenes. Um to date, we've had over two hundred applications come through. Uh I'm really pleased to announce, uh only yesterday, we cabinet uh awarded five hundred thousand pounds to. A project, uh the Norman D Community Shop and Cafe, uh which is going to uh be a brand new development in that area. Which will stop people having to drive four or five miles to buy food and meet and talk and chat and and be a community again. So. A fantastic project. We've given out some smaller grants, uh Men Sheds in Weybridge got thirty thousand pounds and there was a Claygate Garden got thirty thousand. Um it's been a slow process getting started, but now we're up where the ball is rolling. Uh we've got monthly advisory panel meetings, which means projects are now coming forward uh fast and furious. Um the team have worked now, we have a two-week turnaround for new applications. So any new applications coming in will receive a a yes or no, whether they can progress to the next round within two weeks. So I'm hoping now you will start to see a lot, lot more about Your Fund Surrey as the money starts to filter through and projects start to come to life.
And so some of those uh figures you quoted there, Mark, we're talking serious amounts of money. Um. So and it did, when you said in the uh application, think big, you you weren't kidding, were you?
Well, this was, I mean, the the project itself is a is a fantastic new idea, it's brand new, it's not been done before. We've had lots of applications for really good causes of existing projects, that people wanted to sort of renovate buildings that they've already got. Which which is perfectly fine and they're great ideas, but this is really, it was out there, it was a community coming together. Um they've raised over a hundred thousand pounds in donations from over two hundred residents. It's a real feeling of a community pulling together to to make their area better for everybody. And that's really what this was about. It's about a legacy project. So really excited about that. That will be built out, we hope, next year. Um so by this time next year, that will be up and running and uh everybody will hopefully be benefiting from it.
Great, thanks, Mark. Um that's fantastic. So um let's have a look here. Um how are Surrey County Council going to tackle the issue of our local street lighting? I understand a pilot scheme is currently in place, but this will be rolled out across Elmbridge. Will this be rolled out across Elmbridge anytime soon? Um I'm not sure who's going to take this. Is it you?
It's street lighting, it's probably me, Paul. Um I'm not aware of a pilot that's currently going on. I mean, our our key thing that we're doing at the moment is the LED rollout. And I'm pleased to say we're over fifty percent there um on rolling out. Um and it's proving actually to be saving uh more carbon. Uh than before, as well as money for the taxpayer, which uh was was originally the primary driver, but uh the environment has now very much uh taken that. So we're switching actually pretty much any of our our lighting on the highway network over to LED. Um it's the same with uh traffic signals, they're all moving over to LED. Uh because the great news about that is uh they save uh seventy-five percent of uh carbon. Uh and uh also uh costs for operational. So I'm I'm not aware of any particular pilot. If if it's a question around night time safety, then uh Surrey Police uh run the Safer Streets programme. I don't think they've started any yet, uh but uh that's possibly a question for the Police and Crime Commissioner.
Okay, good enough. Okay, thanks for that. Um now, next question. When will the local authority housing benefit allowance actually fall in line with the private rental properties? For example, the local allowance for a four-bed property is three hundred and thirty-three pound per week, yet four-bed properties rent for two thousand. Uh plus a month li- uh leaving quite a shortfall for a single working parent to make up. We are overcrowded in a three-bed property and there is no affordable housing. Now, I think that this is actually more of a borough council. Uh question than a county council one, but as the resident has taken the time to um ask the que- ask the question perhaps. Because we've got a few borough councillors here, perhaps um somebody might want to just just take it anyway. Sinead, go ahead.
Thank you, Paul. Um yes, I am a borough councillor in Spellthorn. Um and you're quite right, Paul, to point out that the. It is the districts and boroughs that have um the planning legislation. Um and have the delegated authority to to manage a housing waiting list and to provide support and advice. Um to those people who are on the housing waiting list um or living in the high-cost private rented sector. Um and and feel that they may qualify for for social housing. So the person who's posed the question, I would really urge and recommend them to go to their borough or district council, to the housing department. To make an appointment to see a housing officer and to talk through their situation. Um and if they haven't already, to see if they are eligible to apply to get onto the housing waiting list. Um and then to seek advice and support from there. There's also Rent Start as well. Um and if they're in a borough district that has a Rent Start system uh up and running, then I'd also urge them to seek advice there. And there's, there is a lot of information available on most of the borough district's websites. I do totally uh sympathise and empathise with that uh distinct lack of parity between. Prices in the private sector um and and those that fall within the local authority under the LHA. So my my advice and strong recommend re- recommendation would be to seek advice from districts and borough. Um and um I'm sure there's lots of information available. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Sinead. Okay, um so the next question, but before I get to that, if you are watching this live Q and A. Uh please put any questions you have, anything at all relating to uh the county council area of responsibility. In the comments and we will get that answered for you. So um okay, here's an interesting question. Can you tell me why Christmas lights on lampposts stay on all night, but our actual streetlights go off? Matt Furnish. It's like the Matt, it's it's turning into the Matt Furnish Show again.
Yeah, you'll have to answer that question, Paul. Um so the majority of the streetlights are um done by the districts and boroughs or local businesses actually. And um and they pay for all of the upkeep and the costs on that. Um the streetlights uh are only turned off between uh one and five AM. Um and actually, in a in a lot of areas, particularly town centres, they are on all night. Uh especially if there's anything like a hospital, university or a railway station, they do remain on uh for the majority of the night.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so the uh next question is, can the cabinet? Comment on the state of Surrey's children's services, please? It is also impenetrable if one needs to make a complaint, and I have to say, I've heard that too. Uh from some of the residents uh that I represent. So uh is that Claire Curran? It is. Go ahead, Claire.
Well, yes, that would be me. Well, the 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 question was, could I comment on on Surrey's uh children's services? And uh we won't hide from the fact that three years ago, Ofsted told us that our children's services were inadequate. But we have put in such a lot of work and investment to really make, drive through some improvements, really fundamental improvements to social work practice. And the work that's done with children and families. And I do hope the person who's asked this question might be able to uh recognise there has been some improvement. But you know, things are not yet perfect. We know we've still got work to do. And if you're raising a complaint, then um I would imagine that you're you you're not still not happy with the way things are. Please, don't give up. Um could do, if you if you haven't got the right answer to the question that you're asking. Then continue to do so. If you would like to do so, then email me directly and I will see what I can do to unblock anything. Um the only one one thing I would say is that complaints, like everything, are a process which is very regulated. They have to go through a certain um motion, but if you're not happy, please email me directly. I'll see what I can do. But the the overall message I would like to, like you to take is. We we are working really hard to make Surrey's children's services as good as Surrey's children need them to be.
Great. And I happen to know for a fact that some of the residents that uh I represent. Um and I've encouraged to email Claire or they've emailed me and I forwarded it to Claire, always get a a a a a response. So uh I'll I'll just um associate myself with those um with that recommendation. So uh thanks for that, Claire. Um now, the uh next question, um why have Housing Trust stopped buying? Property that was bought under the right to buy with housing as it is in short supply, when people are offering their property back at the current house prices? I think, again, that's a uh uh strays into the realm of um the borough council. So what I'll do is uh. We'll ask somebody to respond to that in the comments um after the event, because uh that is a borough council uh area of responsibility. So do Surrey County Council have any plans on opening a walking centre for Elmbridge in the next few years? Um now, we have Tim Oliver and Steve Backs uh at Elmbridge. I thi- I think I'm right in saying you guys are both Elmbridge. Did one of you want to take that?
Um we are both Elmbridge. Um the uh well, the the there is, that we will be opening, or the NHS will be opening. Um uh a new or replacement uh medical centre in Weybridge, uh following the the fire three and a half years ago. Uh in fact, I was there today with Ben Spencer, the local Member of Parliament, uh together with the leader of Elmbridge Borough Council. Uh and some of the cabinet members, um having a look, walk around the site. Uh uh you know, we're at a point now where uh there's general agreement um on uh the layout. Um and and in particular, the medical facilities, it will be re-provided. The the uh as always with uh the NHS, the the definitions uh do change. Um and walking centres uh in this, in the sense of what people understand them to be, i.e. you can walk in without an appointment. Are are no longer um the the sort of favoured um option. Um but uh in certainly in Weybridge, the expectation is that you will be able to access care. Um on the day, um depending on what it is, but you probably will have to make an appointment. But that that's that's the only uh site at the moment in Elmbridge and indeed uh the only site that I'm aware of uh across Surrey. Where uh there is a plan to uh build or create uh a a walking centre or the equivalent.
Yeah, I I'd just add um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um in my neck of the woods in uh in Molesley, we've got a very aging hospital, the Molesley Hospital. Um given great service over the years, um but it's fallen into a bit of dilapidation in in recent decades. Um there was some talk about its future, but um in twenty sixteen, decisions taken that it would remain. Uh so we're expecting it to be rebuilt. Lots of talk about whether that would include a walking centre or perhaps. Uh a place for GP surgery to be based. Um so uh I I personally think if that happens, that would be a a really good and um. Worthy addition to the the area. As you know, the north of Surrey is is um densely populated. Uh and I think extra facilities would be welcome there. Um not quite at the stage where we're at with well with Weybridge. Um but I'm fingers crossed, hoping that we're going to get something good in Molesley too.
Great, thanks for that. Um now, next question is, what is Surrey Fire and Rescue Service doing to help keep people safe in their homes? Um that's, that's got to be Kevin Deenis, I think, is it? Am I right in that or or not? Yeah, right. I know there's been a bit of a, bit of a change around recently, so go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, well, as you as you know, I'm probably two two days as well into my um new role. So. I mean, I think Fire Service and Rescue are doing a tremendous job and this is about prevention. Rather than actually having to go out to the um incidents. So they're doing lots and lots of work about home visits, going to businesses. Making sure they're safe, um doing talks. We have things such as the Drive Safe Stay Alive presentations. So there's a lot of preventative work um that they're doing at the moment to try and prevent. So without going into each individual one and what they're doing, I think that's probably a good summary, Paul. It's about prevention, but obviously then primary is about keeping people safe as well. Hmm. So it's better it doesn't happen, then they don't have to do that. So hopefully that answers the question.
Yeah, yeah, no, it does, absolutely. And Surrey Fire and Rescue Service have a really good website, inform. We've lots of great information on simple things like smoke alarms, for instance, that can. Um uh I I I bought some smoke alarms for my property based on that information, so uh I definitely recommend residents check that out. So uh thanks for that, Kevin. Um now, um my local area has flooded a number of times in recent years and I'm worried it will happen again this winter. What is a council doing to prevent flooding and help residents like me to protect their homes and businesses? Who's having that? That's Kevin.
I start off with that and I'm sure Mike might jump in as well. I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, flooding has a devastating impact on communities. Um and if you live in a flood-prone area, you know, the anxiety and worry about living there is just horrendous. Um Surrey is investing thirty-three million over the next ten years to tackle the risk of flooding across the county. And there's measures such as um informing landowners, land owners about the maintenance that they must carry out in border courses. It's about investing in property flood resilience and developing flood alleviation schemes. But it's also about working with our um partner agencies. We have boroughs and districts, um Environment Agency and Thames Water. To make sure we're all prepared to deal with flood events when they occur. And hopefully they won't, we know that will happen. This prudish work with residents and communities, hopefully it will improve their resilience to flooding. And we need to make sure residents and businesses are aware of the flood risks. Um they can sign up to receive flood warnings. Um from the Environment Agency and it's about knowing who they can call for. And it's about knowing who they can call for help. And there's, there's a lot of information, Paul, if you look on Surrey Prepared or the Surrey County Council, but also the government websites where you can look at, check for flooding services. So you can get lots and lots of useful information. That's the sort of the, the next 10 years. And obviously, there's lots and lots of projects going on for individual areas. I won't go into those because I think we could have a complete meeting just talking about those. But it's something we take very, very seriously. Marissa, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Just really briefly to say, we take it so seriously that we've invested a quarter of a million pounds in the biggest flood management scheme, the River Thames Scheme. We've put our money where our mouth is there. That's a huge scheme to help residents combat flooding. And more broadly, the, the fact is flooding is linked to climate change. So we're doing this huge piece of work on getting to net zero because we want to combat those weather patterns. More broadly, we also have to take into account things like concreting over driveways and lots of small development things which aren't helping the situation. We need to think about those. And of course, we're planting 1.2 million trees which help take the rainwater.
Right, okay, thanks for that, Marissa. Now, we've got just under 10 minutes ago. If you have any questions still, put them in the comments there, we'll try our best to get those answered. Now, the next question is, I appreciate that many residents use computers in libraries, but the last time I used them, they were very slow and dated. Are there any plans to upgrade them? I'm also concerned that I constantly hear rumours that libraries are closing. Is this true? Who's going to take that? Libraries.
That's down to me, Paul.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, very valid point. Really, the computers, they were very dated. I say were because it was great news. I think pretty much every library now has been upgraded to Windows 10, which I'm reliably informed, I'm not very computer wise, but they're super fast, very much more reliable and very much up to where we are in the current 2020s. So, and they, they are now operational across all 52 library services that have computers. Yeah, I, I keep getting these rumours, week in, week out, that various libraries are closing in, in various towns. I don't know where they start from, but we committed in November 2019 to retain all 52 library offers. And I reiterated yesterday, we will retain all 52 library services that we offer at the moment. They may change their look, they may change where they are to some degree, but where there is a library offer at the moment, it will remain.
Great, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so we're going to get on to the next question. The church where I am volunteering in the vaccination centre is worried about the cost of heating, given we need to keep the doors and windows open. Will they be funded for this? Who's going to have that? Is that, is that Tim Oliver?
Well, I can try and answer that. I mean, the, the, the NHS England are the authority that approve the vaccination centres and fund them. So I, I, I would direct the questioner to, to NHSE or through their local CCG, Clinical Commissioning Group or, or the region. But that, that isn't actually an issue for the County Council.
Great, thank you very much. Great. So the next question is, my child is currently in primary school and has send special educational needs or disabilities. I'd like to know what the council is doing to ensure he can, they can continue to learn locally and get the best education possible. Who's got that?
Me, Paul.
Denise, go ahead.
So, yeah, so, so Surrey County Council have a very ambitious programme of expanding our specialist provision. We've invested 17 points, 79.6 million pounds to deliver 1,600 places. 280 of those places were delivered this September with a similar amount planned for next September. And every place, as the questioner identifies, is one more child growing up in their local community. And that is so important. This is very, very high quality learning environment that will, will absolutely certainly meet their needs. And this programme is, is on track. We have a very accomplished property department, making sure that all of these places are being delivered. And we're really pleased and encouraged by the support of our mainstream schools in Surrey, who are really stepping up to enable us to deliver this provision in partnership. So thank you very much for the question.
Great, thanks, Denise. Okay, so next question, I'm not quite sure whether it's our domain, but I'll take it anyway. New build house prices are extortionate. Can a larger percentage of houses be given at a reduced rate to enable first time buyers to actually get on the ladder? Now, I, I, that's not really, I don't think it's our domain, but I would invite Tim Oliver just to perhaps just make a comment on that. As it's such a difficult question.
Yeah, absolutely. And one of the biggest challenges actually for, for the county is the cost of housing here. Both in, you know, we, we all probably have friends or relatives that, that, you know, when they, when they, when they move away or go off to university or whatever, you know, it's almost impossible for them to come back and buy a property here. So, and indeed, it's also a real problem for us in, in recruiting people in, you know, healthcare particularly. So I think the, the, what the, what, what the County Council can do and is doing is to use its land and its buildings wherever possible, wherever appropriate, to, to look, look at those as opportunities for building key worker housing in particular. We have an extensive programme around provision for adults on extra care and those sorts of things. But I think we, working with Homes England as well, it's a national issue and it needs to have a national solution. But certainly, we are doing what we can in terms of using our resources and our land to see where we can, we can create housing that is, you know, truly affordable.
Okay, thanks for that, Tim. So the next question is, to get to net zero, could Surrey County Council collaborate with businesses to cut transport emissions and congestion, e.g. with supermarkets and couriers to create a last mile distribution hub or hubs? Marissa?
Not quite clear on the question. They're asking us if we can collaborate with supermarkets, did you say?
Yeah, so, so, so to collaborate with business in general, as a supermarkets, I think was just one example, to, to help cut, cut transport emissions and congestion.
Yeah, I mean, we already are, is the simple answer to that. We're working with businesses as much as we can and our door is wide open to them. So not just limited to transport, but other, other things as well. So absolutely, transport is responsible for 41% of our admissions. So it's a key area to target and obviously businesses are fundamental to that movement of goods and staff. So yes, is the very quick answer to that. And you can find out more by looking at our climate change plan on the website.
Okay, Steve, I think you want to add something to that.
Thank you, Paul. I, I was just thinking, obviously, we can all play our part, all of us as consumers. Choose the products that we buy and a lot to be said for shopping local. I think we certainly saw the value of that last year, especially during the lockdown. And choosing goods ultimately that have got the fewest miles. I think that's the best way that we can, we can exercise our rights as consumers to make a difference.
Absolutely. And I think it's fair to say, a lot of residents are becoming more and more environmentally conscious. I'm seeing more evidence of that almost every day. So what you've just suggested there, Steve, I think we're going to see more and more people doing. So thanks for that, appreciate it. Now, the last question now, we've got about a minute left. We may go over slightly, but I'll take this last question and then we'll wrap things up. So thinking of the increase in demand for children's and adults' social services, what will you do to make sure that Surrey County Council gets its fair share of the new national insurance levy? Will you use it, for example, to recruit and retain care staff? Who's going to have that?
I'll come in there, Paul, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think adult social care, you know, has had a lot of profile recently. And there's been, been some solid announcements from government in terms of reforms and improving integration between health and adult social care. And in fact, today, we, we've had a government's white paper announced. So there's some really positive things coming out. And we really welcome the government's decisions around that. There's determination and focus. But there's no doubt about it, our frontline staff, our providers across the county and our own in-house staff and teams and colleagues in health have faced considerable pressures over many years. And it's recently got worse through the pandemic. And I think it's safe to say that we, Surrey County Council have worked hard to support them as much as we can during these challenges and changes. But there, there's no doubt about it, I'll be very quick, Paul, because I'm conscious of time. I could talk for a long time about this. But, you know, money is coming into the service, there is the national insurance levy. But that, there are some areas that still need clarifying, more detail and working through. The new levy will raise, the government tell us, £12 billion per annum. But there hasn't really been a clear commitment as yet to show how this will be divided between health and care services, adult social care beyond 2025. Because we all know for the first three years, the first couple of years, a levy will be going into the NHS to clear the backlog. So we're lobbying all the time, we're asking the question all the time. Once we get to 2025, how will that money be, be cut up? What piece of the cake will Surrey County Council get for our vulnerable residents across the county? Because demand for our services are increasing on a daily basis. So we will continue those discussions and the aim is to continue them until we get the answers. I hope that, that helps, Paul. Thank you.
Yeah, it does, it does. Thank you very much. So we have now come to the end of our Facebook Live. I'm just going to ask Tim Oliver just to have the final word on behalf of the Cabinet and then we'll wrap things up. So go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, thank you very much, Paul. And, and just to, to, you know, clearly endorse what Sinead has said. I mean, we are lobbying government on a, on a, on a regular basis, both locally and through our national network, the County Council's network. And we're hoping that, that we will get some funding in the immediate future from the settlement, which we'll, we'll, we'll hear on, add on the 16th of December. But the, the, I mean, in terms of this evening, thank you very much for the questions. There's some, some really good questions there. Hopefully, you've seen the breadth of work that we're doing within Surrey County Council. And I hope that residents see that, that we are genuinely doing whatever we can to improve the lives and the livelihoods of our residents. I think we had always, we started this meeting, I think we had all rather hoped that we would be through COVID now or coming out of the other side. It looks as if we've got some, some challenging times over the winter. Absolutely pleased to comply with the, 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 you know, the recommendations and wear face coverings and so on to protect yourselves and, and your friends. But very grateful to everybody that, that's listened today. We will have, we will have another of these sessions in the new year. But if you have any particular issues, any other questions, our email addresses are all available on the Surrey County Council website. So please do make contact. And thank you, Paul, for, for facilitating this this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. I'd just also like to thank the people who are helping us in the background, the unsung heroes, fielding all the questions and feeding them through to me. That's Peter, Emma, Bob and also Trevor, Trevor Hogg for your help as well. So thank you very much, Cabinet members. I'm going to ask you to stay where you are, stay muted until we're confirmed we're, we're finished. And we will advertise on the Facebook page the next time we're going to do one of these, hopefully early at some point in the new year. So thanks very much.